Please, first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is the approval of the minutes for the November 5th meeting. Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes?
The only thing that I noticed was, and Charlie and I talked about this on the phone briefly, on the first item, pen medicine, it says approved 5-0, and then at the bottom, now a little bit further, it says tabled. I'm sorry, I'm pen medicine, I'm talking about Wawa.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, and then, which is correct, as I recall, we tabled it.
Did you take a vote on the tabling?
We did table it, yes.
Okay, but did you take a vote on tabling?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's what the...
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, is that how, okay.
Maybe we should say then that the tabling of Wawa was approved by a 7-0.
Okay.
Well, it was, I guess it's 7?
Well, I guess you really need to take a vote on tabling.
We did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because on page three, it says recommendation, colon, motion to table and highly recommended meeting with the neighbors, tabled 7-0, and then who voted?
Right.
All voted for it.
Okay.
You have to vote on that, Jeff.
Then, yeah, why don't we knock out the approved 7-0 underneath the development plan?
On page one.
On page one, cross that off, since it's clearer on the bottom of page three that it was tabled 7-0.
Okay.
Did you get that change, Trish?
Yes.
I move we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
As corrected.
Before we do that, are there any other corrections? Okay, all right, all those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved with the one correction. Do you want to say anything about that?
Sure, I can give you a quick summary. This is for the project on 106, 108 Cambria, and it's the sewage facilities planning module component for a municipal planning agency review, which says that this board certifies that it meets your zoning code and it meets, you know, all of the codes, which, it's an administrative action that this board takes, so we would need a motion to sign the planning module document for a.
I move that we approve the signing of document for a. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Before we move into number four, well, actually, let's go to number four first, transfer of equivalent dwelling unit, I was told what EDU means, from Bloomingdale Court to 525 Luella Avenue.
Madam Chairman, that has, the latest agenda that has been removed.
That is removed.
Right, so that is no longer on the agenda.
Is it continued or just plain old, removed?
Uh, removed.
Withdrawn, okay.
No, it's withdrawn then, right, Steve? It's withdrawn, not removed. Withdrawn?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well then, we will go on to report from the committee to select, or to make nominations for the chairman for next year.
We, I talked to Kathy and Regina, and the three of us were on the committee, and the committee recommends a nomination of John Lord as the chair and Skip Kunda as the vice chair.
Okay, are there any additional recommendations for chair or vice chair? If not, is there a motion?
Yeah, someone needs to move that we accept.
Motion to accept? Okay, all seconded, all those in favor of electing John Lord as chairman, congratulations. Say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of electing Skip as vice chairman, say aye.
Aye.
I assume there's none opposed? Wrong way to take it, I know, sorry.
Mrs. Bogosian.
Well, congratulations.
Mrs. Bogosian, we would like to thank you, the township would like to thank you for your years of service on the Planning Commission, because Mrs. Bogosian's terms up, so this is her last meeting, so we would all like to thank you for your great leadership and what you've done for us on the Planning Commission.
Well, thank you. Take my little bow. Twenty-four years on planning.
Wow.
I was two years old when I started. Okay, back? Yeah, okay. All right, item number five, 521, 525, South Roberts Road. Is anybody here for that one? Come on down.
I'm Paul Bloomfield, I'm the owner of 521 South Roberts Road.
You were in this before us several months ago, weren't you?
On another matter. I was also two when you started on the Planning Commission.
Okay.
This is the first time you're seeing this. This is a pretty simple lot line revision, two existing residential parcels, existing houses to remain, all we're asking to do is change the property line between Lot A and Lot B. There's no, no buildings or improvements on this part of the property at all, no easements, no regrading, no removal of trees proposed, none of that, so we have a fairly simple, straightforward prospect.
What's the reason for the change?
To be honest, the Lot A was built, or bought by a developer a little while back, so that he could take advantage of the lot that came with it and build a new house there. And just in speaking with him, there was an opportunity to expand my property, because he's now going to be selling off Lot A here, already having removed the other lot that it came with, and so he's very agreeable and amenable to this process if I can get the approvals executed in a timely manner.
And access to, your lot is Lot B?
My lot is Lot B, yes.
And what is your access to that?
There's a driveway that's just to the east of Lot A.
Okay.
That is shared by five houses.
All right.
But that's not changing, you see part of that driveway as it crosses onto Lot B, shown on the plan, and that's not part of, that's not being proposed, any change.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this?
Which lot was actually sold off on Lot A, the developer?
To the west of Lot A, there's another address, which is 527 Roberts Road, which is already a subdivided parcel beyond, beyond what's described as Lot A. So there's not a subdivision of that part of it.
Okay. And with the 10,000 square feet that's basically being transferred to you, is that usable land? Or is what's...
That part is really not usable land, it does add more usability to the land I already have, you know, there's a limited area that's near the house itself that would become a little bit more usable by having this larger property around it. It's fairly steep in general on these sites, and the area being transferred in particular has some slopes in there, but there's a flat area that's next to the house on my Lot B that would be a little bit more useful.
Madam Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
So, the applicant's requesting several waivers. One concern that I have, I'm not speaking for our other consultants, is, so Roger's comment on the second page, "Plan must show name, address, and seal of the engineer or surveyor responsible for the plan. A professional engineer or registered surveyor must sign and seal the final plan." The applicant is an architect, which is a great profession, and he's a licensed architect, but that's not what was required on the plan. There's also an easement that doesn't close, it's right below the sliver, so I think there's some cleanup details on this plan, and the other, I'm sorry, the other waiver, existing principal buildings, driveways, and on adjacent peripheral strip, so none of that is shown, which makes the plan somewhat hard to decipher, so the commission has two choices, you could recommend approval based on professional engineer signing and sealing the plans, your call if you approve of the waivers or do not, and maybe want these things cleaned up, or you could have the applicant come back. My only concern is that the plans are correct, not for us, but 10 years from now, when somebody's buying another lot, it needs to, it needs to show everything it should show and be correct. So that's, that's my only comment.
Thank you.
I would tend to agree with that. I think that, you know, like I said, it's not for today, it's for maybe three people from now that buy this property, and there's a lot of bickering and...
I have a question for the staff. If this was prepared by a professional engineer or registered, a professional engineer, would it show many of the, most of the things that you're concerned about that's listed here, like slopes, steep slopes, and there should be a north point on the plans, and contour lines, and datum, and all of that?
Could ask for a waiver. So any applicant could ask for a waiver, that's not really dependent on who prepared the plans, that would be based on the applicant. My only concern is, there's common driveways that you see go onto another property but aren't reflected, there's an easement, there's a couple, there's an issue with one of the bearings that Roger noted in his review letter, so from a, from a, from an ability for somebody who doesn't do this every day to interpret these plans, I just think they should be cleaned up. Now, that doesn't mean we have to hold the applicant up, you could give it approval with conditions, or you could have them come back, so my concern isn't that, my concern is that for future people that buy one of these lots, or one of these lots is sold, it's reflected properly on what this commission recommends and what ultimately gets approved and goes, gets recorded.
And if I can add to that, before the applicant will be able to record this plan, those couple of items that we noted that with the seal of an engineer and fixing the easement issue would have to be rectified anyway, no matter who did the plan, before they were able to record that at the county for, for transfer, so they would have to be addressed either way. And it doesn't affect the, what I would consider to be the planning of the lot, where, I mean, they're, they're not proposing any, any additions or modifications other than moving the lot line.
Well, I agree with the sentiment, the sentiments here that it should be done right the first time, so there's no problems going three generations from now, or three buyers from now. I'm concerned about paragraph, item eight, is that, is a waiver that's requested for that, where the subdivision of, but there contains existing streets, so on and so forth? Is that something that the Board of Commissioners will decide at some later point?
That's something that, that we typically put in all of our letters, because that's a choice of the Board of Commissioners, if they want to request additional right-of-way on the fronting street. Now, I don't, in this condition, I'm not sure why they would or if they would, but I'd note that, and in most of the letters that I write where that's applicable, where they would consider that at the board level. That's, that's where, if you have an existing road and it has, say, a 30-foot right-of-way, and the code requires 50, they have the opportunity to do that, should they so choose.
But the...
And what item eight says is that the right-of-way should be shown on the plans, the right-of-way is shown on the plan.
Is it shown on this current plan?
Yes.
Okay.
As is the North Arrow, and the one question about the bearing discrepancy is, the original deed is incorrect, so that's why there's a discrepancy. The current proposal is showing the correct bearing on that one property line in question.
I think having the driveway shown on the plan is important, any easements, things like that for recording purposes, if, you need to know where the electrical easements are, the sewer easements and so forth there. I think all that should be shown on this, especially if there's a cluster of five lots using these roads, I think it's, or driveways, it's important to know.
To the best of my knowledge, there's no electrical or sewer easements on this, it's just an access easement for the adjacent property, correct?
Whatever easements there are, if there are.
I have a Yerkes plan that was prepared that shows the easements on the neighboring property that I can show you, but there is an access easement for the driveways, and there is a utility easement to the west for the benefit of Lot Two and Three, if you look at this plan.
And they are not on the properties being considered on this plan, correct?
Correct, the property of 525 has none of these easements, and so the transfer is showing a property that has no easements being shifted over, so...
Isn't the one easement, so looking at the plans, right below the triangle of the sliver, that's the easement I was talking about that, that doesn't close on the plan?
Okay, yeah, you're referring to, this area here is shown shaded on this plan, and there's an easement that terminates right at this point.
Right, so you should show that on your plan, is what I'm talking about. So I guess what I would request of the commission is, if whatever your recommendation is approved, approve with conditions, denial, is to also opine on the requested waivers, if you feel that they're... My only concern is the plan gets cleaned up and is appropriate for recording, and as Roger said...
Yeah, definitely.
That can happen at a later step, but in my mind, this plan is not ready for prime time, and it can be cleaned up before it goes to the board, it can come back, however you wish to do that.
What's the board feel on this?
I think you should clean it, drawing up.
Do you want to see it again?
Yeah, I, only because I don't want to get into a point where it'll come back and haunt us.
Thanks.
Someone else will come and want to do the same things, and it'll be more intricate, even though we look at things individually, I don't want to get into the reputation that you can slide by, some people can slide, I think you really do need an up-to-date, an up-to-date drawing as to what's happening here, because this, this could come back and haunt somebody, I think.
I agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
Can you explain to me the purpose of showing improvements that are 500 feet away?
Because our staff wants it. That's, that's, that's the ordinance, that's what we require in this township. Some things don't make sense, but if they believe it's necessary for, for someone in the future, now, there may be some of that, and if the staff thinks that they could waive some of that, I'm okay with that. Any of those things you think that we don't need?
I have, I have no objection to the 500-foot waiver, since there's no improvements being proposed on the property.
We usually accept like a Google Earth view. My concern is, because there's a confluence of all these properties, that the easements, so as you look at the plan, the driveways go off into nowhere, because it doesn't show it on the adjacent property.
I agree.
Not that that's a huge item, but for somebody looking at this in the future, all these improvements should be shown, that's what gets caught in the 500. I don't think the applicant, I don't see any benefit to anybody surveying all these various things 500 feet away, but I would think it would be proper to have those noted on the plans, all adjacent.
How about contour lines?
He said it's steep slope, that's the only reason why I brought them in, because, you know, I wouldn't know that, looking at this drawing.
No, you wouldn't, yep.
Well, those are different, those are different waiver requests.
Yes.
If, if he showed, for the waiver request with regard to the 500 feet, it would probably be okay if he showed the location of the easements, and then provided the aerial that Steve mentioned, to, to satisfy the rest of the requirements, and that, that would provide information on where the features in other houses are located. Okay, but...
You're saying have the aerial as a backdrop and show the lot changes and everything on top of it, right, as a, as a base plan?
Unfortunately, in this condition, the aerial, or the one that I was trying to use, is all tree canopy, you can't see anything.
Oh, we won't even be able to see it.
You can't even see the houses on the aerial.
The main thing is, I'm not so concerned, like I say, we often let applicants use a Google Earth view, and they transpose things. The only thing I, that I like about the 500-foot request requirement is that the applicant would show the easements and the driveways, all adjacent to the property. I, I would think no more than that is required, just everything adjacent to or connected to that property, driveways, easements, I don't think contour lines and steep slopes are required for basically a change of a line on a piece of paper, which is what this is, we're just sliding a line over. I'm not trying to, any undue hardship to the applicant, but the, the plans are lacking, so they either get cleaned up at Planning Commission, or they get cleaned up between PC and the Commissioners, it's, it's your call, but I, so my request on the waiver is, the 500-foot waiver only be needed for everything adjacent to the property, we don't need to see what happens down on Eithan Avenue or Mill Road from this property, but just all those things, and part, that should be, those things should be on this plan, again, not for me, not for Roger, not for this board, but for somebody in the future buying this property or researching this property.
And for the board's benefit, if they would ever come back at a later date and propose some improvements to this lot, they would have to show all of the contours, the steep slopes, and, and everything that's pertinent to whatever they're doing in, in either a land development or a grading permit process, whatever would be applicable at that time.
Okay.
One of, number seven, okay, is that something that's necessary, I mean, is that a legitimate request for the waiver, the six-inch caliper? I'm, I'm not the tree hugger, so I'm...
Well, that's...
Only if the trees are going to be taken.
Yeah, that's, that's, again, that's a requirement of the code, that's not my wishes, that's a requirement of the code.
You could probably address this.
And should any improvements be proposed to this lot, they would have to show that on a subsequent plan, when they come in for grading, and they would have to go in front of shade tree, and like everybody else does when they build something.
I look at this as more as a, as a plot plan, because it's just a lot line change, so in, in my personal opinion, the contour lines, steep slopes, trees are really not required, because we're just sliding a line over, but all the other surveying data should be there, that shows access, driveways, again, that's my recommendation.
I would tend to agree with that. What's the board feel? So we're looking for anything that touches this property, the easements, and definitely driveways.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
I'm happy to clean that up in any way that you deem fit here, and I have that information to present to you tonight, in a way that you could understand what's happening. My request would be that I be able to do that in between now and the Board of Commissioners, rather than come back here. I prefer to have your vote conditional on those items tonight, so that I'd be able to move forward in the process, because otherwise, I'm going to lose my opportunity here.
Okay.
This property's going to be placed for sale soon, and if I don't have these approvals, I'm going to be creating a burden for the, for the other owner, and that's just not going to work, so...
Okay.
I can show, if you want to have a look at this plan here, it does show the driveways and all the adjacent properties here.
I believe you, but it needs to be merged on one plan.
I understand that, and I can provide that information.
You can pull that plan up a little further on the table, and they'd be able to see it, there you go.
So, do we have an avenue by which we can have this corrected before it goes before the Board of Commissioners?
That's what I'm asking.
You can, you can approve it with XYZ conditions.
So, we're not saying we're recommending approval after it's, you know, conditioned upon, we're recommending approval if they come to the board with these things on the plan and they're satisfied with them?
Subject to.
Subject to the approval of staff.
So it's a little different than our normal, like, just recommending something...
No, I, I think it would be the same as any other conditions, it's just, you name the conditions.
Then, before...
And if, and if the applicant doesn't satisfy...
Subject to the conditions we place on it.
If the applicant doesn't satisfy the conditions adequately for me and Steve, it doesn't move forward to the Board of Commissioner.
Okay, then that's fine.
Okay, so let's be specific here about what we want on it, we're not doing, number one, we're eliminating, we're not going to require that one.
I think, I think Roger did say he wants the, he wants to then with a professional engineer, registered, must sign the final board.
Are you looking at a different number one than I am?
No, I'm looking right here.
Second, second page.
Okay.
Yeah, Kathy, I think it's probably prudent to start on the second page.
All right, so...
Number one.
Let's, number one you do want, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, you do not need, that's deep slopes.
Is that correct? I kinda, I'm, I'm kinda into this deep slope deal.
I know, but this is just a lot line change, basically.
Yeah, okay, I just, you know it's going to come back.
Yeah, and even if it were shown, we couldn't change, we couldn't change the determination based on that, so I'm okay with waiving it, because...
The only problem is, if they go in and change them, and now they have a different set of man, you know, they could change them.
Oh, you're saying...
They can't, they can't change them without coming in and getting a grading permit.
Yeah, you're right, but...
He's just memorializing it.
Yeah.
There is a record of it in the original subdivision plan, which I have here, if you'd like to see any of these other issues, that talk about the perimeter properties and the driveway access and/or the grading, I have that information, it's just not represented on this plan, because I'm just trying to keep this simple. So if you are interested in the grading, this plan is the original subdivision plan that shows the contour lines at five feet, and you can see what, what the grade is doing in the area in question, but...
It's just incorporated into one plan.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter.
Well, shouldn't that then be part of the package?
No, it should all be on one plan.
I mean, it doesn't necessarily be on the same sheet, is what I'm saying.
Yes, it has to be, because it's being recorded.
It can't be two sheets?
Why two sheets for the same property?
I mean, we're saying we're not showing it not to busy up the plan.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that we...
No, that's what we're hearing right now.
Let me ask you, when was that survey done, with the five-foot contours?
This survey is the original subdivision plan from 1965.
Right, so I, I don't think that's applicable, I don't know that anything's changed, but if an applicant came to me with that survey, I would say you need to do these, if it's a, if the commission wants to see the contours, that would require, I don't know that I would accept a 1965 plan.
Okay.
I'm getting the impression, I'm listening to the debate, the conversation, the plan is deficient, and I think we're trying to twist it into something that, to make it less deficient, and I don't think that's really our job. We can certainly not have to have certain things in here that are de minimis, but there's concerns about this deep slope, there's concerns about, that the plan just isn't ready for prime time, as somebody said.
What are the concerns about the steep slope?
Excuse me, I think we have to take that into consideration, and the fact that there's a little bit in one plan, and another one, I mean, it should all be in one plan, done professionally.
All right, let's go through these. Number one, you definitely want, do we want steep slopes shown on it or not, are you, will you be able to get Yerkes or somebody to pull that up?
It's just a complication I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not, I'm opposed to that.
And I'm trying to work with you on the time-wise.
I'm opposed to requiring the, the steep slopes shown, because there is a plan that somewhat, it may not be to date, but there is a plan on record, even be it that it was the original subdivision, and the cost for putting that on there is, is prohibitive.
Let's take a feeling from the board here, how many of you want the steep slopes, steep slopes shown on this plan, which is basically a lot line change?
I would like to...
One, two, three. I could let steep slopes go on this one, because it's just, I'm looking at it as a lot line change, as opposed to a subdivision. Is that general feeling?
Yeah, I'm looking at it the same.
Okay, so X the steep slopes.
Well, why don't we, why don't we attach the 1965 plan to...
Can't do that.
That's on file with the township, correct? That's on file with the township?
I believe I got this copy from the county.
Yeah, that's already been recorded back in 1965.
So it's, it's available to, to us if we want it?
Yeah, but that's not...
I wouldn't recommend attaching that, this plan is a standalone plan.
Yeah.
I wouldn't recommend attaching a, well, so I was five when that plan was recorded, I would not recommend attaching a 53-year-old plan to this plan.
Yeah, too many things changed, it probably wasn't even subdivided back then, or maybe that was the subdivision.
This is the approved subdivision plan, yes.
All right, so we're going to nix the steep slopes. Number three is North Point, we can get that on there, or it is there?
It's on there, maybe it's a little too sophisticated, I'll put an N on it.
Existing principal buildings and their respective uses and driveways, number four, how do we feel about that?
You've got to put the adjacent, only the adjacent.
Just the adjacent, okay, so, sum of four.
Adjacent driveways, easements.
Yep.
And if there's any question about that, I can show you on this, this plan, with those conditions.
No, we want it on one plan.
I understand.
Okay.
But we may not have the opportunity to show you.
Contour, okay, number five, contour lines measured at vertical, well, we're skipping the contour lines then, correct? All right, so no number five, datum with contour lines, I assume we're skipping that one, since we don't have contour lines on six, and large trees, we're not worried about that one at this point. So it looks like you need to do one, three, and four, oh, here's eight.
Eight is for the Board of Commissioners, but you can certainly opine on that.
And the right-of-way is shown here, so you're suggesting that they may want to change the right-of-way?
It's not identified, you haven't marked down what the width is, I didn't see any numerical...
It just says R O W, yes, okay.
Okay, so you'll properly identify that, and that takes care of eight then, Steve? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, Chairman.
All right, any other comments from the board on this?
So, Madam Chairman, I would request you opine on number one, the discrepancy Roger brought forth, and that the applicant said, is it an issue with the deeds, that should be, that should be addressed one way or the other. That should be, that should be addressed one way or the other before it goes to the Commissioners. So if there's, if what's shown on the plan is proper, there should be some verbiage to that effect, a note explaining it, showing the two deeds and why it's, why that's incorrect or why that is correct. Again, this is just a cleanup item--
Yeah.
--for the future.
And I believe it's just a typo in the deed, but that should be called out on the plan, so it doesn't--
Yeah, but the original plan and my proposed plan show this the same way, which is correct. The deed is written with a typo, so that's the discrepancy.
Should the original deed be included with this as a copy to--
Well, they'll be, they'll be revised at the time of recording. There'll be new deeds that'll be generated for each parcel when it's recorded, so that'll be taken care of, but there should be a note on the plan that just indicates that the deed was incorrect.
All right, so you'll take care of putting a note on there to that effect?
There'd be a new deed description written up at the time of recording for both properties, right? So as long as that shows the correct--
Now, you should--
Yeah, but if anybody researches--
You should address the correction.
Make a note that says this has been--
This is why this has been corrected.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else we need to do on this one?
Not from my end, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anybody else from staff there? Are there any, I see a few faces in the audience. Is there any public participation? Any comments from the audience?
I'm sorry, I was a few minutes late, so I'm Jean Meston.
Come on up to the mic.
Yeah, come on up to the mic. And just give us your name, please.
Jean Meston, and my husband is Elwood Schmidt. So we are at 823 South Itham, and there's a house, two houses that have gone up recently, but the most recent was a big surprise. And I'm wondering if I can get a copy of that plan, if that's the plan.
Sure, I think it's in the agenda.
Oh.
But yes, I can get your copy.
That would be great.
You are along Itham in this block?
Um, let's see, where's the corner property?
This is Roberts Road.
Yeah, so there's that big mansion thing here, and what used to be the Norley property, which is now the James--
Okay.
Can you talk into the mic?
Sorry.
Did you have any comments specifically on this plan?
Um, I just don't, I, we haven't been informed until now with the question about the lot lines and a change in the lot lines, I guess.
Yes.
And so some of us got that information from you.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess runoff and overcrowding are my--
Well, there's no, no new construction going on this. It's just a lot line change. He's buying extra ground to go with his house from Lot A, I guess it is.
That would be you?
Yes.
And you're the owner?
Where are you?
I live at 521, so, um, you're looking up the hill behind you.
I'll tell you what.
This is where the building is.
If you want to discuss it, why don't you wait till after the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So you have no comments specifically on the lot line change? There's no new construction, we're told at this point, or contemplated? Who knows?
No.
It's just a lot line change. Any other comments from anybody else in the audience? If not, questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion on this? How do you want to proceed? Do we want this, allow this to go through and have the corrections approved by staff, or do you want him back again?
Staff?
I would agree.
Staff on this end?
Yep.
Okay.
I think we should approve, subject to--
Subject to staff approval?
Correct.
Okay. Would somebody like to tackle a motion on this? All right, how about I get you started here? I make a motion that we approve this subject to--
With the motion of approving of the--
We're recommending approval.
Uh, recommending approval, thank you. Of sightline approval, um, subject to staff approval, that changes be made to the site plan, including, can I just reference?
The numbers? I'm fine with that. One, three, four, and eight.
Yeah, subject reference to items number one, three, four, and the general condition number one.
And also eight, I believe, there, because he asked the mark--
Okay.
--the right-of-way.
And item number eight.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody understand? Okay.
All the, we're granting waivers, two, five, six, seven, and eight.
Not eight.
Two, five, six, seven. Two, five, six, seven.
Eight has to be cleared up on the plan, the clarifying the right-of-way.
I told the motionist to say it.
Yep, okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, it's one opposed and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, four.
Thank you.
So you are approved, recommended approval, I should say. All righty, Wawa is continued, and then we have the proposed comprehensive lighting ordinance.
So, Madam Chairman, this was brought forth at the Board of Commissioners. It was at the impetus of Commissioner Farhi, and the board agreed to have an ordinance brought forth. This was very short notice for this commission, so really, we just wanted to get it in front of you tonight with the thought that it would be back before you in January to get your more detailed comments. But this is an ordinance that is township-wide. It's general, it's, it's to address lighting concerns, and the vast majority of it deals with new construction, new lighting, replacement of lights, like in a parking lot. There's not so much retroactive unless there's a, you know, really true nuisance. So, again, you got it late last week, and it's before you. Our whole hope was just to get it in front of you, maybe kick around some ideas, and then after the January meeting, if you do have, if it so pleases this commission, to provide recommendations or comments to the Board of Commissioners, we would bring it back to them. They had requested that it come down to you.
I read over this, and a couple comments I have, and I did not go into it in any detail at all, but I remember when Villanova was in front of us, there was a lot of comments regarding dark sky requirements on parking lots and things like that. I did not see that specifically mentioned here. I don't know if there are specific requirements for lighting called dark sky requirements, which is to help to eliminate some of the light fall-off that goes out and pollutes the sky. I think that needs to be addressed in here. The other thing that really jumped out at me in reading it, on page 13, requiring residents to come in when they're adding lights to their property on an already existing house, I think is really kind of overstepping the involvement of the township in somebody's use of their property. To have to hire an engineer specifically for lighting to be able to present the plans that you're requiring, I think is too much of a burden.
If you're talking about accent lighting or the normal entryway lighting, I think you're absolutely right. When we, when we come across problems with residential lighting, it's almost always when sports courts and things like that are added to properties, and, and extraordinary lighting is part of that. So maybe there's a way of, of excusing accent-type lighting and, or just limiting the lighting requirements to, to, to sports courts on properties, tennis--
Yeah, I would rather see it limited, as you say, for like a tennis court or something like that. And, and because the way I interpret it, and I admit it was a quick read, it sounds like anyone planning to install or alter outdoor lighting must submit a lighting plan and review. Really?
That's exactly what it says.
That's exactly--
And so I think it's appropriate to carve out where you want to see lighting plans and where you don't think it's necessary. I think that's an important function of reviewing the ordinance.
I think number 188-12 should be eliminated, that paragraph quite truthfully, and put in something specifically targeting what you want to target. For example, sports tennis courts or volleyball courts or whatever on private property that has lighting. How's staff feel about that?
I think the threshold should have more to do with the, the height or the intensity of the lighting, because if you try to pick uses, you're going to probably not be comprehensive. Is there a way to put a threshold on the height or the, or the intensity of the lighting or something like, rather than saying for sport courts?
Well, if you do that, then you have to prove what you have, in which case you have to hire somebody to give a lighting plan to the township for approval.
I'm saying the lighting plan threshold would only be met if the lighting is over a certain height, over a certain intensity, over a certain number of lights, something like that. Because, you know, just because it's for, if it's, if it's a neighbor putting up very bright lighting for any reason that's out of the ordinary, how can we capture that?
I don't think it should include anything that do residential. My personal feeling, I just don't think that we, we have a right to start stepping into people's homes and what kind of lights they're going to put on them. You can--
Well, the ordinance applies to residential, doesn't it?
This is, I'm talking about residential housing. I think anybody in a single-family dwelling should not have to come in front of any board of this township to, to get lighting approval. And anything that pertains to residential housing in here is eventually going to come down to the point where you start to put a house up, or you do any modification to your house, you're going to have to come here and get a permit to do it, and someone's going to come out and say you need a, a lighting engineer to tell you what you can and can't do to meet the obligation. I just think, I would never, I won't ever approve or vote for something that allows the individual township to start coming in to tell people in their houses what kind of lights you could put outside. It's, it's an expense that just is not, not really worth it, in my estimation.
For example, security lights.
But do we have a lighting code that applies to residential housing now?
I'm not sure, quite truthfully, because I haven't gone into the code to read that.
My understanding is that surely lighting regulations are in the zoning ordinance, and they're notoriously difficult to enforce in zoning ordinances.
I went through the code, and there were, it's all over the code in different places, tucked here, tucked there. A number of things that are in this proposed ordinance exist in the code in different places. You just have to find it, so it's not, it's not at all--
So they're not necessarily altering?
No.
They're just restating?
Right. And, but to Charlie, to Charlie's point, I had an electrical engineer look at this, and where it says total outdoor light output for a single-family detached dwelling, if you, if you put five 90-watt PAR 38 floodlights, that's 2,000 lumens per light. So you're, we're going to tell people in Radnor they can put five lights on their property if it's an acre? That's ridiculous. I mean, so--
Yeah, so that's what, that was my question, is exactly how is this--
My--
Compared to what we have now?
It's, if you, you'd have to take this and you'd have to look at everything that's in the ordinance, which I sent everybody, and you'd have to compare. But the problem is, you, you'd have to do some, everything, you'd have, I would want to challenge everything in here in terms of, like, where did this information come from? Like, who, you know, who--
Yeah, yeah, what other towns are doing these things is what I was going to ask next.
We, we have, there's, there's a bunch of municipalities in Pennsylvania that have ordinance, but almost all of them are like Wallace, Euclid, West Whitland, West Town, very, not comparable to Radnor. So Laura Marion has this much in their code. You know, they even, they don't use the word lumens.
What did they use?
Watts.
Watts.
So, but I, I think, I mean, the electrical engineer who looked at this, his first take was, this seems onerous. It has, there's an attitude in this ordinance, and I don't know why. Like, I, like, that, so when I was looking at this, I just felt like, you know, like this whole explanation of, of glare, like, so there's all these categories of glare. What is, I mean, what is the difference between reflected glare? Does that mean glare off a window in a house from a car? Like, and it's, to me, it's like glare is, it's hard to put, it's hard to put your arms around--
That's why you'd have to have an engineer come in and tell you what it is, as opposed to just using your own gauge, because there is no gauge really as, as an individual. This ordinance, is this something that's been taken from other townships? Is it taken out of a form book? Is it, is it something that has been tried by other townships? Has it been tested in the courts? Because I thought I saw some ambiguities, more than a couple.
There's a number--
Everybody knows that if you go in the court on ambiguity, we lose.
Ties go to the runner. There, there are a number of clients that we represent who have adopted standalone lighting ordinances because they become so, lighting issues, your lighting regulations perhaps in your SALDO, but SALDO is only applicable if somebody comes in with an application. And you have lighting regulations that are very hazy in your zoning ordinance and not uniformly applicable. So a lot of municipalities are going with standalone lighting ordinances. I, I hesitate to say this because of the, the comments that you've made so far, but I found it useful to use lighting consultants to assist in, in developing regulations that you think are appropriate for your community. I know there's one at Amy's firm that we use in one township I represent, and that's one option. It's very, very difficult for an attorney, an engineer that doesn't do lighting, and for planning commission members, to sit and look at an ordinance like this and say, yeah, like 100 lumens, that sounds great. We don't know what that is, and, and, yeah, or a foot candle or a knit. It's, those are all concepts that we don't deal with on a regular basis. So it's not a bad idea to have somebody that does this expertly and routinely review the regulations and give you some advice on what works for Radnor.
Another issue that I had, just a question really. Thanks to Matt going through the ordinances and extracting references to lighting, would all those references to lighting then have to be rewritten or, or, or removed, I should say, from the current ordinance? The one that came to mind was outdoor lighting, which is on 188-7, I think, which talks about 60-foot height restriction on outdoor and recreational lighting. In the ordinance itself, it's 85 feet. So would you have to go back with, everything would have to be redone? You have to cull through the ordinances and take out--
You'd want to make sure that, that you reconciled everything in a new ordinance with what's in your existing ordinances.
Correct. You had to do it physically, not just with some blanket statement that--
Yes, you'd want to do it physically.
I think, Kath, I think generally, I, I think that there should be lighting ordinances for commercial properties. I think that's important because of safety factors, traffic, and a multitude of other different kinds of things. I think, like in a lot of places within our ordinance, they're very ambiguous. I think that if, if they're going to do a lighting ordinance of some type, it should be specific, and it should be, you know, exactly as to what we want done, so that when someone comes in in front of us with a lighting plan or wanting to build like a Wawa or Penn or any kind of place that's going to put some kind of commercial property, that there are specific rules and regulations and standards that we require them to do. If they need an exception to that or a waiver from that, we know, or future boards will know, or future commissioners will know exactly where the baseline is and work off the baseline. This doesn't do that. It's too, it's almost too, it's too intelligent, you know? It's, it's above my pay grade, and I kinda, I kinda, and again, I, I don't have a hard time with commercial. I think that's good. I just don't think that we should step into the residential--
Yeah, I agree entirely with you.
Yeah, I guess we're all trying to understand the need here, but if we're finding that our current SALDO lighting requirements are insufficient, why not just address that? If we don't like the 85 feet, let's make it 60.
I agree with that. I agree with that. I think that's what we need to do. We need to come up with an ordinance that, that we think is the baseline that we need in Radnor Township, whether it be.
But does it need to be a standalone ordinance? That's my question. Or does it belong in SALDO where it is?
Well, I think you said you had a problem with it in SALDO, because if there's not a subdivision, it doesn't hit it.
That's right, it's not.
Well, any land development it would apply for, right?
Yes, subdivisions in land developments, yes, but other.
So if it's not retroactive, what would it apply to?
Well, I think there's actually.
New improvements that are non-grading, non?
Correct. If I had an athletic field, and I was relighting that athletic field, I'm not in for land development, but I would have to come in, and I would have to comply with this ordinance. So, you need something to catch things beyond land development.
Okay, now I understand.
Courts have ruled that billboards and cell towers are not land developments.
Okay, so now I understand the need. Okay, well, let's go in that direction. I think Charlie made it pretty clear that we don't, residential's not the way to go.
Let's take a feel from the board.
I'm concurring with that.
Of the board, how many of you feel that we should address residential with these requirements?
Let me just say this. At this stage, I think it's premature to start voting on residential or not. I don't think we have enough information.
I'm just saying, so we can focus our energy before the next meeting.
Say what?
I'm just saying, so we can focus our energy before the next meeting, not to, you know, to look at it in the different light.
Yeah, it's not a binding.
Look at it in a light that, where we're going.
It's a feel-type thing. What's your thoughts? How many feel that residential should not be addressed in this ordinance?
Looks like most of us, we all.
Okay. I have a question. Who wrote this? Where did this come from?
I think it's an amalgamation of ordinances from several different townships. So, I don't think one person wrote the whole thing.
Okay. All right, does it address institutional also? Not just commercial, but institutional?
I thought that it addressed residential and non-residential.
Well, if we.
I think institutional should be in there as well.
Yes, I want the word institution in there. Institutional.
Can you tell us, any of the townships, are they in a 10 or 15-mile radius?
I do not believe they are.
So maybe we should also be looking at, like, Lower Marion and things like that.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea to look at Lower Marion. Roger said that he thinks that Lower Providence is one of them. I don't know that I could get there in 10 or 15 minutes, but it's not terrible far away. But it depends on, it depends on traffic. So, I think this is absolutely a first look, more like a concept to discuss, all right, a standalone ordinance is a good thing for lighting, so what do we want in it? How, like, what are the topics, what are the concerns that we need to address? And another issue that this ordinance touches on, but that you're going to need to discuss, is the grandfathering, because there's no legal requirement that lighting is a non-conforming activity or use. So, but at the same time, you certainly don't want to adopt an ordinance that makes everybody in the whole township change the lighting in their parking lots. But there should be a happy medium. And I think what John Rice thought when he was taking a look at this, that it made sense that if there was a nuisance, or a threat to the public health and safety, then we can look back, but otherwise, it applies to new uses. Yes?
Can I just jump in here? Sorry, hi. So, and I understand that you don't want to look at residential, and you don't want it to be a burden for residents. The issue is as much a health issue as anything. So, spilled light, light glare, whatever you want to call it, if it's shining in your window, and it's 11:30 at night, or, you know, 6 o'clock in the morning, it's a health issue. So, I don't know how you would address that, but to say it's only bad if it's institutional or commercial, I don't think it necessarily, it's not going to have the same effect, so to speak. I view this more as, again, as a, it's a quality of life issue, but it is a health issue as well.
I'm going to second what he says. Most of the lighting complaints that we get from an enforcement standpoint are people complaining about their neighbors' lighting shining in their windows. Whether that neighbor is residential, or whether that neighbor is non-residential, probably more often it's residential. Somebody puts a spotlight at the top of their house, it shines in their neighbor's. Somebody puts up a basketball court, and the light spills over into their neighbor's windows. So, it, you're not going to address most of the problems that arise with lighting if you exclude residential altogether.
But, those issues you're bringing up are existing issues?
Not necessarily.
No?
So.
No, people change their lighting schemes and put up new lighting in erect sports courts, or put up spotlights all the time.
Now, they'll probably still do it, but you're now expecting them to hire a lighting engineer to go to the township and get approval? Isn't that a tough burden to put on?
Well, that would be a tough burden to put if you were actually requiring that, but.
But that's what it says.
Okay, and you can work on that, but, obviously, you don't need a lighting plan. You wouldn't want to have a lighting plan to put up, like, an accent spotlighting at your house. But, if there's provisions in the ordinance that if that light spills over onto another property, or shines in someone's windows, it gives the township the ability to enforce the ordinance. So, sometimes you will want a plan, sometimes you'll just want the ability to enforce a nuisance.
So you're going at it more from an enforcing a nuisance standpoint?
In some cases, yes. I feel pretty strongly about sports courts, only because I've had problems in other municipalities with them. They, sports courts are noisy, and they're poorly lit a lot of times, and they do cause problems in neighborhoods.
But you're just going down a slippery slope.
I agree.
Look what's going on right now with every household that's lit up with for-seasonal lighting. What bears basically how I decorate my house versus my neighbor's house?
Well, I think there should be a Griswold standard. But, I don't think that, in and of itself, holiday lighting, you're using a million little LED lights, but they're still LED lights, and they're not directed toward an off-property thing. I wouldn't want to touch holiday lighting. That's, I.
One thing that I found in our present code is that swimming pools, basketball courts, all that stuff is addressed, in terms of light on those facilities, spill over, it's all addressed. The problem is, in the code, it's all over, it's all over the code. It's not in one place. I think we need to take the time to look at what's in the code now, and then put that against this ordinance.
And that's a really good suggestion.
So that we're not just, we're talking, we're not talking about, we're talking about things that presently exist in the code. You know, so it's, people have not looked at the code. Who wrote this ordinance?
I think there's another aspect, too, touching on what you just said, is that I noticed that there appeared to be different lighting requirements or standards for certain areas, like Garrett Hill, and Wayne Business, I mean, there's a whole bunch of them, and they're somewhat similar, but they're also different. It would be a nightmare, no, it's probably not a nightmare, it's not the right, but it would be a hell of a job to go through everything and make sure that we don't get the neighbors aggravated up in Garrett Hill, because maybe before my time, they went through some long discussion on lighting, and they worked hard, and they got this thing put together, and now it's going to be taken away from them? I don't know the beginnings of any of that, but it's something that's got to be considered.
Well, I think both Wayne and Garrett Hill have overlay plans, that, I'm assuming that it's addressed in the overlay plans.
Yeah, they're on.
You're correct, Madam Chairman. That's why they're called.
I think what we're all saying is, we're really saying the same thing. We think there should be, if there's going to be a lighting ordinance, that it should be the lighting ordinance, and it should cover exactly what the township requires from anyone doing a lighting scheme, whatever that might be. And you shouldn't have to be in 17 different places in the zoning ordinance book. There's a lighting, there's a lighting ordinance, and this is what you follow. If you're going to build this, this is what you need to do. And I think that's what we're saying.
I think it also makes sense to bring it up to date with the current lighting, light bulbs that are out there. The LEDs, and the things that are replacing tungsten, the wattage is different. A 40-watt LED bulb might have the same light put as an old 60-watt tungsten bulb. So you need to look at lumens to be able to equate the two on there. And you might also want to address color temperature. I don't know if you want to go into that or not, but if you want to really get in the weeds, in some cases, you might want to address color temperature, because of the blue light problems.
So if I may ask, just, so what can we provide to the planning commission in the next packet, to give you some more information? So, obviously, our solicitor's here, she's taking copious notes. I just want to make sure we understand what you would like to see from staff, including the solicitor, when we send out the next packet in January that you can review, so we can continue the discussion.
What started this?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Steve, I think what we need to do is, someone, and I'm willing to do this, someone should look at as many municipalities in Pennsylvania that have a light ordinance. Look at what they're doing, and maybe even make a call and find out how it's working. And I'm willing to do that.
And I would recommend, if you want to do that, go to Code 360?
That's how I did this.
Yeah, that's the best, okay.
But, but I think that's just research, you know, so it's, I think we need, I think part of the problem here is, we need to do some due diligence in terms of how this is applied to other municipalities like us, and I think, so that's one area.
Could I just get an understanding of why we're talking about this now, or what started this discussion? Not that I'm opposed to it, I'm just trying to get a little better understanding of the background. Is it?
So, on one of the board of commissioner agendas, there was a request by Commissioner Farhi, Commissioner Farhi, to look at this. So the board directed our commissioner's solicitor to provide an ordinance. This ordinance was spoken about last night at the board meeting, and the commissioners wanted this to go to committee, to get the planning commission's views on this. Again, understanding that tonight was more, here we go, have this roundtable discussion, get some, maybe some items that you need more information for, and then in January, dig back into this. So that's the reason.
Steve, was this more of a comment over what's going on in Villanova with the parking lot development, or something else? Where it's basically snowballing into the residential side from commercial and/or institutional?
So, Mr. Nat, I don't, I don't know, I mean, this is a township-wide ordinance, so it's not aimed at any one item, it's township-wide. I don't know the impetus for that. I do agree with a couple of our commission members, so we have smattering of comments in the zoning ordinance, and I was asking the solicitor if this came to fruition, they would, you know, just reference the lighting ordinance, and whatever that lighting ordinance would be, but that would just be one more set of review points for land development, as Regina mentioned. So I think there's a lot of merit. So the reason I was asking the commission, what maybe we can do for you, so we've talked about units, you know, whether it be lumens, foot candles, watts, you know, things that we can look at. Mr. Golis, in a matter of minutes, gave us a hit of all the zoning items, which was fantastic this afternoon, we thank you for that. So if there's anything we can do for you to provide in the packet for, I guess it's a January 8th meeting, we'll gladly do. Or, Mr. Golis's.
Well, one of the things I think that should be, I'm not looking to get a book the size of the Bible here, but it refers to the IES Lighting Handbook, 10th Edition, which seems to be incorporated by a reference into this, into this ordinance, except where it's not incorporated.
I believe it's a little larger than the Bible.
Yeah, I was, I'm sure. I think we need some, since, since obviously, without it specifically stating what parts of this handbook are being incorporated, I think we, especially on this debate about residential versus institutional versus what the heck we're doing here, I mean, I just think that's a problem from a whole other standpoint, from a drafting standpoint, I think it's a problem to incorporate something wholesale like that. But I do think that we need to have somebody come here and explain to us what the heck's in this book, and how it's going to affect this ordinance.
I think.
Lighting is a, I mean, as an architect, we don't do our own lighting. We go out and hire lighting designers, because it's such a highly technical field. And for asking us to pass judgment on what's in here is kind of really challenging to do.
I agree. And.
I mean, I would think the township would put out an RFP to, for proposals to lighting designers if they really want to pursue this.
Yeah, I think the process is a problem, the process.
Process is, this is not a process.
We don't know what we're doing with this.
In all our, in our various items, we do, in SALDO, we use the ITE trip generators, we reference PEN.DOT publication 408. So it's very common in these ordinances to reference industry standards, that, so that not every bit of minutia from a specific code thicker than a Bible is incorporated. That's why we do it.
That's wonderful if you're PEN Medicine and you're building your building. But, before we foreclose the entire issue of what to do with homeowners, I think we need to have somebody come in here who maybe can explain, yes, you can regulate homeowners without it being onerous. And that's going to be a problem. This is ridiculously onerous right now, the way it's drafted, it's not practical at all, besides just being onerous. And there could be several light fixtures that we don't know nothing about, modern light fixtures, that if you just mandate, okay, this is what you have to use. You can use them, because they're designed in a way, it's not going to be going in somebody's backyard, in somebody else's window, they're, once they're installed. But we don't, we don't know that. Instead, you have all this verbiage that is not going to be particularly enforcing. I mean, I know we're just at the beginning of this, and that's why.
We just had a half-hour discussion on waivers for a drawing. I can't imagine the waiver requests for light fixtures. Or lumens.
Well, just to make it real, when they say barn-dooring a fixture.
Yes.
When you take a $6 floodlight, and you barn-door it, it becomes a $200 unit.
Yes.
So we're going to tell people to barn-door their floodlights, for $200 each?
Yeah.
And who's going to enforce this, by the way? How is Radnor going to possibly enforce?
No, I agree with you.
To Stephen's point, if you go to page four, I mean, this says it all, I think. There's a definitional section here, and item 28 is a steradian. Now, here's what a steradian is, for those who really want to get into the weeds on this. The solid angle subtended at the center of a sphere by an area on the surface of the sphere equal to the square of the sphere radius.
Can I just jump in here again? Because I just see this going in a circle.
Yeah, just like the one I read about.
So, I've had an issue with my neighbor across the street who had floodlights shining in my, like, my face as soon as I walk out of my front door, and I nicely asked him to, if he could redirect them, he did, and that's kind of the problem solved. That's, I think, most of the time, I think the neighbors are good neighbors. Not to say that what's in this document isn't burdensome, and I think it definitely, you need to filter through. The other issue that I see, again, this comes down to a health hazard. So again, if it's residential, institutional, or commercial, it's a health hazard, and that's how we should be treating this. It's no issue, you know, they say grandfather, someone should be grandfathered. I don't see this as that kind of issue. It's like smoking in a bar. There was a day where you couldn't smoke anymore, and that was it. And it's the same thing that should happen with some of these lights, if they are creating that health hazard. I know that you've been given a lot of, a lot to read through, and I think that going back and forth will certainly, you know, there's certainly a lot of information that we can get. This is not supposed to be burdensome to the residents, but it's, should hopefully help the quality of life, as well as safety amongst our residents.
And I've listened to everything everybody's said, and I was trying to put it together in a cohesive fashion. I think maybe the first thing to do is just, like, forget about this ordinance. Take a look at the ordinance that exists in similar municipalities, and then sit down and talk, what do we want to regulate? And come up with, like, an outline of what we want to regulate, and then we draft an ordinance from that, as opposed to starting with an ordinance and trying to improve it section by section. Let's get an idea of where we want to wind up, and see what other municipalities that are similarly situated have done, and move on. are similarly situated have done and move on from there.
I think that sounds like a great idea because I think what is here would not specifically address what Mr. Farhi's situation is with the neighbor's floodlight coming in the window. It seems to me that this, it wouldn't hit that anyway because it's existing lighting.
Kath, I got to ask the commissioner something. Our job is, we're merely, we're merely a recommendation board. We have no power. Listening to him just now, it sounds like he's kind of made up his mind what he wants to do. So, you know, it kind of puts us in a bad spot relative to trying to change what's going on here. So I think we're just going to do our job that we always do and hopefully that the board's going to be open-minded enough to see the way we look at something as opposed to what they've already, some of them have already made up their mind on.
Yeah, I agree. I think we just have to do our due diligence. We're a recommendation, but we have to use our common sense as well as our experience to put something together that we can support. I don't think we just take this and say it doesn't apply for Radnor Township, no, thank you. I think if we want to, if we want to address some of our lighting deficiencies, we have to make recommendations on how to do so, but without, again, being onerous for residents.
I agree. I think that we, there are things in our ordinance that we really need to address. And that's really what our job should be, is to make our ordinance palatable for people who want to do and improve their properties or businesses that come in so that they know what our rules are and they're not ambiguous, because some of them really are ambiguous. And I think this is one that we could address because lighting is becoming something, you know, even if for no other reason, security-wise, with the way the world is today.
Yeah, there are a number of issues, yes.
The more light you have, the more secure we are, all of us.
I agree. I agree. And also in that, you know, putting thresholds that are not to be exceeded that make sense for the town where maybe they're missing.
And that's what the experts should be doing, is putting what the maximums are.
Yeah, we're not experts in that area.
I think what, the process we just heard being proposed makes more sense because we could say, we want to identify the fact that maybe that didn't address the concerns of a neighbor's excessive lighting going into your property. If that needs to somehow be addressed, we would just put it on a list, not say how it would be addressed.
Right. I think that makes sense. And I think that situation could be addressed by saying, whatever the number lumens is cannot spill onto your neighbor's property. And I don't know that number off the top of my head. An expert would have to come up with that. But if you just say that, that would be enough to give enforcement to somebody who has a problem with their neighbor and they want to get rid of the light that's shining in their window.
Yeah. An alternative is that it would have to be shielded or whatever to keep it onto their property, whatever. So we have to put an out, you know, so that everybody can be happy. So I think the best thing to do is, again, I think that's a good suggestion, to have some more relevant ordinances for similar communities at our next meeting, as well as just everybody kind of, like Matt's doing, like, looking at what we already have. I mean, you already helped us tremendously with that one email.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
How'd you do that so quickly?
I'm not sure. I just wore it out.
And if Matt's going to do that research, I think it's a little burdensome for him to think it'll be ready for the packets for the January 8th meeting. Maybe he want to enjoy the holidays a bit and maybe it's something that can be taken up at February's meeting.
I think that February is probably a better one.
Also, last night at the board of commissioners' meeting, there was mention of a forum in February by the, I believe, the League of Women Voters on lighting in Radnor. So I don't know, I don't know how that factors into what we're doing, but if there's going to be a public forum, it's sort of like a charrette, I guess.
Yeah, it certainly helps to get the pulse of the community.
Well, since I won't be here going forward, what are you looking for for next month?
Well, I don't think we, I don't think we can move as quickly as.
Okay, then February. What are you looking for going forward that we can tell the staff now? Or don't you know enough yet to know what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think, I think if Matt comes up with ordinances from communities that he thinks are similar, then they can be in your packets and you guys can just highlight areas and then give direction to the staff. You need to tackle this and tackle that. And then you can decide if you want to get a lighting consultant involved at that point or if you want the staff to try and put together regulations and we can move on from there.
Matt, I think if you're successful in getting ordinances from other municipalities, just send them out to us right away. Just, you know, I mean, by all means, send them to staff, but send them right out to us so we can start reviewing the material, because it's a lot of stuff to go through and we're going into areas we're not really that familiar with, so. But we'll come up with some ideas, I'm sure.
I think the solicitors.
And councils are going to look for some ordinances also for municipalities that she thinks are similarly situated to Radnor's.
The solicitor, I think her suggestion was outstanding. What are the problems you're trying to address? And then write the ordinance to do that. So we don't want spillover or we don't want X, we don't want Y, we don't. So we have a very wise solicitor. I think we go with that.
Yeah. It sounds like a good idea to me. Do you all feel that way?
We don't know what we don't know.
Right, yeah. So I think we're all on a learning curve here. Okay. Any further comment on this tonight?
Kathy, do we have public comment on this?
Yeah. Yes. Public comment on whatever you would like to talk about.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. One of the issues, as I saw a gentleman spoke last night at the commissioners' meeting, is that the technology of lighting is moving so quickly.
Right.
That literally the bulbs can change the whole situation. And when you have either dark sky or you have no spilling onto the next property, the nuisance issue goes away. So I think you are going to need someone to bring you right up to the thing. The issue of nuisance, I think, is an important issue and I'm going to use a personal example. I live next to the Radnor House condominium and they light their parking lot. And they had X bulbs and X fixtures. And they went and put LE bulbs in them. And instead of having the fixtures go down, they ranged them at an angle. And when the leaves are gone, I don't need any lights on in my house. And I'm probably over 100 feet from this. It's just awful. And I did complain, but because it was existing, there was nothing that could be done about it. And I think there are nuisance situations. I think we all, without talking about it, know a few of the offenders where we would, we could solve a lot of the issues if the lighting was the most up to date and you didn't have any spillage over the property.
Yeah, I think it's going to be hard to say this is the type of bulb you should use just because of the way the lighting industry is changing so quickly.
Right.
But, but you can get at it by saying no more than X number of foot candles, you know.
And the height.
The height. And also spillage onto a neighboring property.
Yeah.
That would take care of a lot of this and you wouldn't need to know the technical aspect of it. You can get at it from that way, which would apply to whatever bulb you had in there.
Well, and you also have in that ordinance, because I scanned it last night, you have this whole issue of hours, hours on and hours off. Apparently, a lot of that is eliminated, that whole controversy is eliminated if they're using the latest technology.
Well, they have to use the latest technology correctly.
Correctly.
Which means aimed right.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi. Anna Marie Hessman, Barley Cone Lane in Rosemont. I am, I have some concerns. It's kind of confusing because you all were just talking about changing this all around and stuff like that. But if I just go back to the way it was written, one of my big concerns about this was the lack of a phase-out plan for anything that's grandfathered. The fact that it's like either grandfathered or it's not. And then the, basically saying that the township ambiguously defined something as a safety hazard or nuisance and that's a clause. I, I kind of think that, you know, with, if someone is having, if it really is a hardship for someone, they should have time and reasonable opportunity to get up to whatever the definition is everyone agrees to. And obviously, particularly homeowners who don't have great resources to redesign their lighting, the less onerous, the better, both in grandfathering and in future things. You know, I'm totally in agreement with that. But I'm very concerned that there's not a clear plan for getting everybody together and getting the township a place where nobody in the township has the burden of living with strong nuisance lighting, basically. And that would be, for me, I would hope that would be the overall goal, is that to improve the quality of life for anybody living in the township, whether they have the $4 million home or whether they have the $200,000 home. So the lack of the grandfathering was of concern to me. And at last night's commissioners' meeting, my neighbor Marty Caulfield, who's been coming up with some really fabulous suggestions about our local nuisance lighting, he had, I think, some sample ordinances that he handed out to each member of the board. And Mr. Farhi may have a copy of those so they could go towards, I think Marty already collated some things that were of use and of interest.
Do you know what township's?
No, I have no idea. He just, he ran around, I didn't even see them. He just like was handing out papers that I didn't look at. But he's had some really sensible constructive suggestions so far and he really has a lot to add to this.
Good.
And when you're talking about looking at what other people are doing, also look at the quality of life in our region and what's happened over the last, I won't say exactly how many years I've known the township. You know, I haven't lived here continuously, but I'm from this area. And noise, light, density, they've all really become more intense over the entire time that I've known this area. And just think about whether, whether you want to be adequate or whether you want to be the trailblazers as you think through this process. And I have a lot of examples from, you know, because my backyard adjoins Villanova's field and I see all the lights from the construction, I get all the lights from the stadium, I've had a lot of experience with nuisance lighting. And it's really, it seems like when I've gone through trying to look for something to say, okay, is this a violation of something? Can I report this for something because this is really a nuisance? It's, it's very hard for me to, I don't have a little light meter that I can pull out every time something goes wrong. You know, like right now, there's, the stadium lights intermittently, they've been there the entire time since I moved back to the area. But even the Performing Arts Center, they've got 24/7 these light bulbs that are just like hanging out naked. And every time I look out the back of the house or walk up my driveway, I'm somewhat blinded by them, but they seem kind of like small light bulbs. Why, if I were to define this, I don't, I don't know what definition that falls under. And when I get into bed, there's a blue light next to the stadium that kind of stares at me sometimes. You know, it's, these are all very different intensities and different angles. So it would be very hard, you know, you, I love measurable things, you know, I deal, I like to deal in tangibles these days because I find it very comfortable to like know what I'm trying to accomplish. But as you are trying to define things, don't reduce too far. That's really my suggestion.
Well, I think, yeah, most of those things you can get at through foot candles, foot candle meter, they exist.
Right.
And it's something that is measurable. So if you say, X number of foot candles from your property should not fall onto your neighbor's property, I probably worded that backwards. But you get the idea, that is measurable and it would go with any kind of lighting on there.
Right. And I don't know if all these nuisances would go above what a, an industry standard of nuisance is.
Well, what somebody in Philadelphia's industry standard nuisance might be, might be quite different from Radnor, I would think. So I think going at it backwards, what we're trying to eliminate is a good idea. And then having your definitions is fine, but all the lighting is changing so quickly. And I think if we want to be ahead of the curve, we ought to address color temperature also because of the blue light.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the board on that?
I guess I just, I like that she's sharing this and we're trying to figure out, but we need to know like what we, what's enforceable, not just enforceable, what's legal for us to do. And I think we need to be looking at, you know, the MUTCD and stuff like that, you know, what's, what's, what authority we have to reach back? What authority do we have to correct existing situations? Because there may be some authority in cases where someone's being significantly impacted. I just don't know.
If the lighting is changed through one, like the bulb.
Right, like if someone changes out the bulbs, is that as good as?
For example, in Sarah's situation there, I'm surprised that they couldn't get at that in one manner or another.
That's why we need an explanation for that. We can sit here and ruminate all night about it, but unless we have some, like Steve was mentioning, somebody who's of skill set, they think this bulb does that, this fixture does that, then we're just floundering around here.
Yeah.
As far as the method, it may, thank you for researching the code. That was very helpful. I did have an opportunity to scan it. But, but as far as where you would start in this process, I mean, I would start by establishing some criteria that would identify situations that are of a lighting concern or where lighting has an impact and stay away from all the technical stuff and just say, I don't want light from my neighbor on my lawn. I don't want light from this here. I don't want, you know, just, I would go through it like that and.
In other words, what you're trying to achieve through the ordinance.
Absolutely. If we're trying to accomplish this and then look for ordinances that may apply, or then put it out to someone with the technical skill to identify how to accomplish that. But, I mean, I think we probably are all know what bothers us and we can probably establish that pretty quickly.
Right. Okay. Do you want to discuss this any further tonight? No? I have this glassy-eyed book. Okay, is there anything else? Let's see, any other public comment? No? Any old business? Any new business?
Again, I'd like to thank Kathy for all her years. I mean, I was with Kathy on the zoning board and she was as good there as she is here. And the direction and keeping us focused on her two years as chairperson has been well appreciated by me and I'm sure by the rest of the, again, thank you very much, Kathy, for your service.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're on your own now.
Move, please, John.
Thank you. Okay, we don't need a second on that, so let's just adjourn. And happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, everybody.